Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee Meeting for Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. My name is Chris Dodson and with us today is Nick Miller, our Sign Language Interpreter. City Council will discuss the following legislation for preliminary vote. Finance and Law Committee, Reverend Burgess is the Chair, Deferred Paper 698, Ordnance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I, Administrative Article VII, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts to Reflect Current Best Practices in Local Government Procurement. New Papers: Bill Number 2019-131247, I'm sorry, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Pharrell &amp; Risinger LLC, 436 Seventh Avenue, Suite 300, Pittsburgh, PA, 15219, in an amount not to exceed $10,228.60 for professional legal services regarding a police matter. Bill 2019-1248, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Snyder, Harrison, Segal, and Lewis, LLP, 1600 Market Street, Suite 3600, Philadelphia, PA, 19103-7286, in an amount not to exceed $8,223.92 for professional services in connection with the police matter. Bill Number 2019-1249, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman, Thomas &amp; Battle, PLCC, 300 Canowah Boulevard, East PO Box 273, Charleston, West Virginia, 25321-20273, in an amount not to exceed $17,541.66 for professional legal services regarding a police matter. Public Works Committee, Ms. Cale Smith is the Chair. New Papers: Bill Number 2018-1239, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a license and operating agreement or agreements with HFT Management, Inc., DBA Gateway Outdoor Advertising for services related to installation, operation, maintenance, and advertising of transit shelters and associated street furniture. Land Use and Economic Development, Ms. Gross is the Chair. New Papers: Bill Number 2019-1252, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 470, Effective July 12th, 2018, entitled, Providing for the Filing of a Community Development Statement by the City of Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Grant in Connection with the 2010 Community Development Block Grant Program, Providing for the Execution of a Grant Contract, and for the Filing of Other Data Providing for Required Assurances, Providing for Execution of Payment Vouchers on Letter of Credit, and for Certification of Authorized Signature. The Deposit of the Funds in the Bank Account and Providing for the Payment of Expenses Within Categories as to Transfer Funds Within City Council from Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery minus $1,508.14 and transfer these funds to Sarah Heinz's House, Bill Number 2019-1253, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 471, Effective July 12th, 2018, entitled, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Various Community Organizations for Operational Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities, and for Administrative/Operational Costs, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities of Various Departmental Programs, Projects for the Benefits of Residents of the City of Pittsburgh at a Cost not to Exceed $918,650 as to Transfer Funds Within City Council from Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery of minus $1,508.14 and transfer these funds to Sarah Heinz's House, plus $1,508.14. Bill Number 2019-1254, Resolution Amending Number 563, Effective August 6th, 2018, entitled, Amending the Capital Budget and Providing for the Filing of a Community Development Statement by the City of Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Grant in Connection with the 2012 Community Development Block Grant Program, Providing for the Execution of Grant Contracts, and for the Filing of Other Data Provided for Required Assurances, Providing for Execution of Payment Vouchers on Letter of Credit for Certification of Authorized Signature, the Deposit of the Funds in the Bank Account, and Providing for the Payment of Expenses Within Categories as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank minus $1,500, Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery minus $2,612.99, and transfer these funds to Allen Place Community Services, plus $1,500, and Sarah Heinz's House, which is additional plus of $2,612.99. Bill Number 2019-1255, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 475, Effective July 12th, 2018, entitled, Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Various Community Organizations for Operational Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities, and for Administrative/Operational Costs, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities of Various Departmental Programs, Projects for the Benefit of Residents of the City of Pittsburgh so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank minus $1,500, Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery minus $2,612.99, and transfer these funds to Allen Place Community Services, plus $1,500, and Sarah Heinz's House, plus $2,612.99. Bill Number 2019-1256, Resolution Authorizing, I mean Resolution Amending Resolution Number 673, Effective April 7th, 2016, entitled, Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Various Community Organizations for Operational Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Maintenance, excuse me, Purchases of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities, and for Administrative/Operational Costs, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities of Various Departmental Programs, Projects for the Benefit of Residents of the City of Pittsburgh so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank minus $1,500, Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery minus $878.87, Northview Heights Tenant Council minus $1,000, Tri Valley Athletic Association minus $2,000, and transfer less, transfer these funds to Sarah Heinz's House, plus $2,378.87, Allen Place Services with an addition of $1,000, and Rock's Performance Academy with another additional $2,000. 2019-1257, Amending Resolution Number 564, Effective August 6th, 2018, entitled, Amending the Capital Budget and Providing for the Filing of a Community Development Statement by the City of Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Redeve, and Urban Development for a Grant in Connection with the 2013 Development Block Grant Program, Providing for the Execution of Grant Contracts, and for the Filing of Other Data Providing for Required Assurances, Providing for Execution of Payment Vouchers on Letter of Credit, and for Certification of Authorized Signature. The Deposit of the Funds in the Bank Account and Providing for the Payment of Expenses Within Categories so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank minus $1,500, Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery minus $878.87, Northview Heights Tenant Council minus $1,000, Tri Valley Athletic Association minus $2,000, and transfer these funds to Sarah Heinz's House, plus $2,378.87, Allen Place Community Services Gallery, plus $1,000, and Rock's Performance Academy, an additional Bill Number 2019-1258, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 593, Effective September 10th, 2018, entitled, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Various Community Organizations for Operational Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities, and for Administrative/Operational Costs, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities of Various Departmental Programs, Projects for the Benefit of the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh at a Cost not to exceed $940,000 as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from Poise Foundation, Aqua Ponies, Aqua Ponics, Northview Heights minus $5,000, West Park Court minus $3,000, Northside Leadership Conference Allegheny City Sanitary Fair $3,000, I mean minus $3,000, North Boroughs Wickley, MOW, Tri Valley, MOW, minus $2,000, North Boroughs Wickley, MOW, Brighton Heights, MOW, minus $1,500, and transfer these funds to Sarah Heinz's House, plus $3,500, and Allegheny City Society, an additional $3,000, Artist's Image Resources, plus $5,000, and Rock's Performance Academy, a plus $3,000. Bill Number 2019-1259, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 594, Effective September 10th, 2018, entitled, Providing for the Filing of a Community Development Statement by the City of Pittsburgh with the Various, Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Grant in Connection with 2014 Community Development Block Grant Program, Providing for the Execution of Grant Contracts, and for the Filing of Other Data Providing for Required Assurances, Providing for Execution of Payment Vouchers on Letter of Credit, and for Certification of Authorized Signature. The Department of the Fund in the Bank Account and Providing for the Payment of Expenses Within Categories so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from North Boroughs Wickley Meals on Wheels, Brighton Heights Meals on Wheels, minus $1,500, North Boroughs Wickley Meals on Wheels, Tri Valley, Tri Valley, minus $2,000, Northside Leadership Conference Allegheny City Sanitary Fair, minus $3,000, Poise Foundation, Aqua Ponics, Northview Heights, minus $5,000, West Park, West Park Kelt Court, minus $3,000, and transfer these funds to Allegheny City Society, when it's plus $3,000, Artist's Image Resources, plus $5,000, and Rock's Academy, plus $3,000, and Sarah Heinz's House, plus $3,500. Bill Number 2019-1260, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 5754, Effective December 13th, 2016, entitled, Providing for Filing of the Community Development Statement by the City of Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Grant in Connection with the U.S. Community Development Block Grant Program, Providing for the Execution of Grant Contracts, for the Filing of Other Data Providing for Required Assurances, Providing for Execution of Payment Vouchers on Letter of Credit, and for Certification of Authorized Signatures, the Deposit of the Funds in the Bank Account, and Providing for the Payment of Expenses Within Categories so as to Reprogram Funds Within the City Council Office from North Boroughs Wickley, MOW, and Brighton Heights, minus $2,500, North Boroughs Wickley, MOW, Tri Valley, minus $2,500, and transfer these funds to Bridge Committee, Committee, Bill Number 1261, I mean 2019-1261, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 598, Effective September 10th, 2018, entitled, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Various Community Organizations for Operational Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities, and for Administrative/Operational Costs, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities of Various Departmental Programs, Projects for the Benefit of the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh at a Cost not to exceed $895,000 so as to Program Funds Within City Council from North Boroughs Wickley, MOW, Brighton Heights, minus $2,500, North Boroughs Wickley, MOW, Tri Valley, minus $2,500, and transfer funds to Bridge Committee, plus $5,000. Bill Number 2019-1262, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 742, Effective November 9th, 2018, Resolution Providing for Filing of a Community Development Statement by the City of Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Grant in Connection with the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, Providing for the Execution of Grant Contracts, and for Filing of the, of Other Data Providing for Required Assurances, Providing for Execution of Payment Vouchers on Letter of Credit and Certification of Authorized Signatures, the Deposit of the Funds in the Bank Account, and Providing for the Payment of the Expenses Within Categories so as to Reprogram Funds from the City Council Budget, Northside Senior Center, minus $2,500, and Northside Senior Programming, minus $2,500, to transfer funds to Allegheny Mountain USA Boxing, plus $5,000. Bill Number 2019-1263, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 743, Effective November 9th, 2018, entitled, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Various Community Organizations for Operational Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities, and for Administrative/Operational Costs, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities of Various Departmental Programs, Projects for the Benefit of the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh at a Cost not to exceed $825,000 so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from Northside Senior Center, minus $2,500, and Northside Programming, minus $2,500, to transfer funds to Allegheny Mountain USA Boxing, plus $5,000. And all these bills were sponsored by Mrs. Darlene Harris. This concludes the reading for Tuesday, January 8th. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee Meeting of Wednesday, January 9th, 2019. Our first order of business is public comment. Members of the public who want to address public city council will come forward. You'll be given three minutes. The green light means the beginning of your three minutes. Yellow light means you have one minute to summarize. Red light means your time has expired. Please relinquish the podium. Good morning, Mr. Ludwig. First speakers, please.
Good morning. My name is Lester Ludwig. I live at 6589 Rosemore Street in Squirrel Hill. And I'm here this morning because when the federal government has, has money, some of it even gets down to our level. This is the case of the lost $37.4 trillion, note the word trillion, dollars in the fight for votes. You, the third party system, the Democrats, Republicans, and Independents are a disgrace. Why? For 86 years, we, the electorate, have been told that there's a conservative who does not want to spend, a liberal who only thinks to spend, and an independent who knows that there is something seriously wrong happening but can't approve or disapprove either of the two parties' positions, which makes them taggable as socialist or communist, disqualifying this third group. And it does away with a really good fight over taxes. In this atmosphere, 5.7 billion that the president wants could almost look like chum change. There's a hidden invisible fourth choice. How many of you do not pay federal taxes? What part of the, of the entire electorate doesn't pay or file any taxes? 20%? 40%? It happens to be 47% by federal statistics. So we have, using a $20,000 definition of poverty, the tax is not collected approach Enough scoffing, lying, and following party lines have collected. Should the Democrats be offering in exchange free college education to fill the needs of our economy, free health care, help for the homeless or addicted, building a wall, an immigration system worthy of our country in exchange for the first three items? That's called negotiation. Gee whiz. I stop, oh, stop lying and deal. If not, the House of Representatives has the final say for this family. You know which family I'm talking about. If no deal finds jail time or forced resignation as Nixon did, provide adequate choices, but first reopen the government. The most immoral facet of this issue is the picture on 60 Minutes of the mother who can't afford to feed a child.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ludwig. Roll call now, please.
Mr. Crowe, Ms. Gross, Mr. Harris.
President Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavell, Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Cale Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Eight members present.
Was there any other speaker? I'm sorry. Was there any other speakers? I didn't, is there any other speakers?
No.
Nope. That's what I thought. Okay. We go to Finance and Law Committee. Thank you, Councilman Smith. We go to Finance and Law Committee, of which I am the Chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 698, Ordnance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I, Administrative Article VII, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts to Reflect Current Best Practices in Local Government Procurement.
Motion to hold six weeks.
Your second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. You can read the next three bills together, please.
Bill 1247, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Pharrell &amp; Risinger in an Amount Not to Exceed $10,228.60 for professional legal services regarding a police matter. Bill 1248, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Snyder, Harrison, Segal, and Lewis in an Amount Not to Exceed $8,223.92 for professional services in connection with a police matter. Bill Number 1249, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman, Thomas &amp; Battle in an Amount Not to Exceed $17,541.66 for professional legal services regarding a police matter.
Need to hold all three for executive session.
Motion to hold.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. The invoices are on the table in front of you. I need a motion for the invoices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions, comments on invoices? Known, seen, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. There are no internal governmental transfer. There are no P.P.A.s. It takes us to Public Works Committee. Ms. Cale Smith is the Chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 1239, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City to enter into a license and operating agreement with HTF Management doing businesses Gateway Outdoor Advertising for services related to installation, operation, maintenance, and advertising of transit shelters and associated street furniture.
Need a motion, Ms. Cale Smith.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Your second.
We have Alex come to the table, please.
You know what we can do? We can, we can remind you for Global Science.
Morning, Mr. President.
Good morning, Alex.
Morning, Council.
Could you please introduce yourself for the public?
Certainly. My name's Alex Peschekanix, the Assistant Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
And could you give a synopsis of the bill? And I have some questions.
Certainly. So the City of Pittsburgh is providing, provides a transit amenity, the shelter network in the City of Pittsburgh. As of last count, 224 shelters located in various areas of the city. 90% of those shelters are advertising shelters. The other 10% don't have advertising in them. Part of the existing city code prohibits advertising shelters in residential, residentially zoned areas. The proposal in front of you is a 10-year license agreement with Gateway Outdoor Advertising, which is a company that specializes in transit advertising, shelters and buses primarily. The contract was put out last year. There were two respondents. Lamar, the existing contract holder, elected not to. Lamar, the existing contract holder, elected not to bid on the new agreement. The 10-year agreement increases the amount of guaranteed minimum from the existing $80,000 to $100,000 in the first year, working its way up to a total of $1,350,000 guaranteed over the course of the 10-year agreement. There is also a revenue, revenue split of up to 22% depending on the, the value of the contract. There's two five-year extensions that are contemplated as well. In addition to resolving, in addition to maintaining and managing that existing network of 224 shelters, the, some of the key objectives of the department managing this contract are, number one, 44 of those existing shelters don't presently serve active transit. The goal would be to relocate shelters that no longer serve transit to an area that does. There would be an increase of 50 new shelters, net 50 shelters added to the agreement, again with a similar split between advertising and non-advertising shelters, so that we're actually increasing the number of amenities that we're providing. Obviously, we would work with council as well as the Port Authority in determining the location, both of the relocation of those existing assets and also those new ones, to make sure that we're actually providing a transit amenity rather than just a, an advertising shelter. And then any overage, the, the, the first $100,000 of any year would be deposited into the Shade Tree Commission Trust Fund. Any balance beyond that would go into the general fund. So those are the kind of key elements. Happy to kind of answer some questions and discuss.
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
You had sent me something, but there wasn't a complete list. It was just a, I couldn't really look at, it wasn't really the information I wanted. What I want to know is, and we had talked about this, well, one, my concern was, this was the old Lamar contract.
Correct.
So Lamar had done, and the, and to be honest, I want to get this passed because the bus shelters look a mess. A lot of them look a mess, and there are needs, and needs in other areas for shelters. So I want to get this passed, but at the same time, I know my colleagues have some questions and concerns, so we may hold it again. But is, so tell me the, with the relationship with Lamar and what had occurred there. Did they apply for this contract? Is this company at all related to Lamar, a subsidiary, a parent, you know, another company that they have some collaboration with? Could you please explain all that?
Um, so the, the Lamar, maintaining the existing transit advertising shelter, accepted that shelter contract from Clear Channel, who had been the company that the city had previously awarded the contract to. Clear Channel exited the market at some point in the early 2000s, and Lamar took that contract over. Lamar's been operating on a month-to-month extension of the contract for several years at lease since I was working as a council staffer in, in 2011, 2012. The, the contract has been operating as month-to-month since that point. Lamar elected not to bid on the contract.
But they did send a letter of interest, correct?
They sent a letter indicating that they would be willing to increase the guaranteed minimum, but not to change the number of shelters that are provided, the, not to kind of complete the, the RFP as, as requested. The, the net increase in the guaranteed minimum over the 10-year period would be higher than what was proposed in, or contemplated in that letter as a result of this. Gateway is not presently affiliated with Lamar. Their markets are typically, as I mentioned, transit buses and shelters. Many of their clients include State College Borough, several of the county transit agencies in New York, Westchester County, Nassau County, as well as New Jersey, the state of Delaware's transit amenities. So they're primarily East Coast-based. They do have a Pittsburgh presence. One of their business managers and, and our business manager would be Pittsburgh-based, so there would be a local presence managing the contract here.
So I know this is one area where Councilwoman Harrison, the mayor, actually agree that, you know, they both have a dislike for Lamar, I will say, if that, not in appreciation. How's that? But I have concerns because Lamar has done a lot in our community, especially in the Mount Washington, other, excluding the sign that they have, still remaining, the sprint sign. Other than that, they have done a lot to give back to the community and Sheridan and other areas where they, and Elliott, where they purchased flowers and plant gardens and help with those types of things. And I want to know if this company will give any type of community, community support as well as, as, similar to what Lamar had done.
I, I, I have a pretty high degree of confidence in this company's interest in maintaining, being a good community partner. I think they, they see the value of preserving and maintaining these amenities and the areas around these amenities as something that's good for their bottom line, just as well as it's good for us as the city. So I have a pretty high degree of confidence that we're going to have a strong community partnership here. And frankly, as, as the department that's kind of taking over this contract previously from the, the finance department, I think Domi is interested in making sure that we are actually getting high-quality amenities out there that are serving transit riders.
So I'll be honest, 10-year contract is a long time, and so I think I'm going to hold this until we have maybe a briefing and talk to council members, address our concerns, so that we can, so that we can, I mean, I know others want to ask questions, but I think we need to have a conversation with council members and what their concerns are. I mean, even when you talk about Port Authority and working with Port Authority on the bus, I mean, to be honest with you, I see no improvement in Port Authority. I, I, I do not feel that they have done, I mean, Councilman Coghill's waiting for some things in Beachview. We had some meetings. I've asked repeatedly for transportation to be done, take, increased in Ferrywood, where we have an Amazon warehouse, which may have helped us with, a little bit with the bid. We had actually provided transportation to the employees working at, at Amazon and Mod Cloth and UPS and Soloni, all those, that area, that industrial park, and yet people were walking to Crafton Borough to get transportation to and from their jobs. There's not, how could you have an industrial park of that size and not provide transportation to it? And yet repeatedly brought that concern up to Port Authority. So I will just say, I seen, so when you talk about Port Authority, I want you to work with council members, because we actually care about the neighborhoods, and we're going to make sure what our residents' need are actually addressed, not just going to do great PR. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're working together on that.
Understood.
I'm going to turn it over to council members, but I do believe that, I do believe I will hold this for at least another week.
President Gross.
Thank you very much. Hi, Alex. Good morning. So I know this was the contract that was formerly held by Lamar, but I thought the contract was bigger than just the bus shelters. I thought it included street furniture.
The contract includes 224 shelters as well as 12 kiosks, three-sided kiosks.
Right. There, there is a kiosk on East Carson Street we're waiting to remove. It's going to be part of the construction project, and we're waiting until this contract is completed so that we can go in and remove. Actually, there are two of them. I forgot. There are two that need to be 1,700 block and 1,200 block that will be removed once this project is completed. But the, the information that you shared was quite extensive, and you went through it pretty quickly. I'm not going to ask you to repeat it here, but I think what would be really helpful for members is if you broke that down and sent it to the clerk so she could distribute it to members. What I heard from you that I liked the most was the reorganization of shelters, that I think you said 40-some shelters are sitting on bus stops that are no longer bus stops and are not serving people. And I really like the idea of reorganizing all of that so that we can better serve people that are, are thankfully using public transportation. But if, if you'd break down those comments that you just made exactly as you made them, distribute them to the clerk, and we'll distribute them to members, I think that would be very helpful. Ultimately, I will support this, but I'll, I'm going to defer to Councilwoman Kell Smith and, and other members that wish to have a further discussion about it. But I think you getting that information to us would, would help expedite and be very helpful.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Next is Councilwoman Carter.
I just have one question. When this contract goes through, or whomever it is, whatever, are we still going to keep our free space?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Yes. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Gross.
Sorry. Do you want me to explain briefly? So, so yeah, we, the city gets free advertisements on all the locations. I just want to make sure that we still have that.
No, and, and again, from a programmatic standpoint, Domi wants to serve as a point of contact to make sure that those actually get utilized.
Right, yeah.
There's still ads from, you know, events in 2016 in the city's space. It's an opportunity for better programming there, absolutely.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That's all right. So, Mr. Peschekanix, the contract is proposed to be 10-year. You have quite a few terms actually laid out in the bill as it's, proposed bill as it stands, year one through three. For example, the contractor shall pay the greater of an annual guaranteed minimum of $100,000 or percentage fee of 15%, for example. So how much money, if you know offhand, are the shelters generating for us right now?
They, to my knowledge, have never surpassed the guaranteed minimum of what is, what amounts to $80,000 a year.
Okay, so it's less than 80,000 currently?
It, it is 80,000 currently.
It is 80,000 currently. And then, I, just, just for clarity, who owns these right now?
The city's in the process of receiving the shelters back from Lamar. So at the expiration of the original agreement with Clear Channel, Adshell, now Lamar, the city takes ownership of the shelters.
So we, who paid for them initially?
They were provided by Clear Channel as part of the original term of the license agreement.
Yeah, this has been a kind of a long story. And similarly, the 12 kiosks, the same thing?
Yes.
We will own those as well? And then, so, and you said that there would be an addition of 50 net, so that would bring our total up from 224 to around 274? So, good. And then, reviewing this contract, which again, you're, it's not the actual finished contract, but it seems like it's, it's 80, 90% there?
Correct.
So you've been negotiating for some time. You've got most of the contract in hand. I'm reminded of Councilwoman Strausberger's privatization post agenda, where we were cautioned. And I think a lot of us really learned a lot from the presenters from other cities, that they operate and maintain types of contracts, or what we should really pay closer attention to, and that council should really see the absolute final contract on. And so just for clarity again, this is an operate and maintain?
Correct.
All right, so, yeah, I think it's, we'll, we'll do a lot, some more homework here. And, but you've given us, again, 80 or 90% of what's there, so we, for us to chew on. All right, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Harris.
Yes. Yeah, these were really put into Lamar's hands, and I don't know who from Public Works should have been watching over this, but it was a poor job of, you know, making sure that they had them clean and taken care of. So you said this was Gateway?
Gateway Outdoor Advertising.
Okay. Why do I feel that that was one of the names utilized by Lamar before Lamar?
I don't believe there's been any legal relationship between Gateway and Lamar.
I, I would like a signed statement to that.
Okay.
By the company. That there's no relationship whatsoever.
Okay.
And I have to state that I, I like Lamar. I mean, I, I have no problems. I think the people at work here are great. I think they just need to pay their bills. They owe the city millions and millions of dollars right now. And that's what I'm upset about. But I have no, it's, it's not that I have a dislike for them. There's taxpayer dollars that have to be out there because of not receiving the millions of dollars a year, and I don't know what that's calculated up to. Bill probably knows from our budget department where we are right now. But, I mean, I, I know I have pictures of some of the, uh, billboards, and I could swear it says Gateway Outdoor Advertising on it. So if you could please get a statement from them, I would really appreciate it.
Certainly.
So how much, how much is this going to total to? What, 150,000 or the percentage?
The, the guaranteed minimum would be 1.3 million over the 10-year lifespan.
Okay. And the company will receive quite a bit more?
The, the guaranteed minimum is, or the, the percentage yield will be some derivation thereof. Yes, it'll be more than the existing guaranteed minimum.
Yeah. Instead of always privatizing, it seems like, and there are other cities that, that actually have their own people that, you know, have like a little advertising department, small, but they're making quite a bit of money on things like this. So I would check into that. And, okay, are you Domi or are you Public Works?
Domi.
Okay, because last night I was in four neighborhood meetings. I know I'm going off here a little bit, Rev. And we have the, you blocked the street off, the, come on.
Obstruction?
No, no, when you blocked the street off, the.
Horses.
Horses. That have been sitting months in areas, and nobody's picking them up. So I'm not quite sure if it's Domi or Public Works. Some are saying it's Domi, some saying it's Public Works. So if your department is responsible, I'd like those pleased to be picked up. And I'm going to say the same thing to Public Works, because I don't have the phone numbers of everybody. They sent me a list, but they didn't send me the phone numbers that go with it. And I think by now, we should have, and especially the chair, should have a list with all the phone numbers and the names and the departments of each, and who's responsible for what, because it's really confusing the neighborhoods, and there's a lot not getting done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coghill.
You know, I think Councilwoman Gross covered a couple of these questions. Currently, we're getting $80,000 a year.
Correct.
This new contract will be getting a little better than that. And to break it down even further, Alex, is, is it per, say, say, per shelter? I'm not counting the kiosks, but, so they're only bringing in a couple hundred dollars a piece a year, really, for us?
Effectively.
Three, four, two, three, $400 tops. And included the maintenance? So, so they, they come, we don't deal with any advertisers. We don't deal with anything. All we do is collect a check.
Correct.
They take care of it. They maintain the, the actual kiosk and.
Correct.
And everything there. So, so I wonder what they make a year off of it. Do you know?
I mean, we have done the audits. The existing guaranteed minimum is, it's the higher of the guaranteed minimum and 5% of the gross revenue, and they are not hitting the 5% of the gross revenue being more than $80,000. I haven't taken a math class in a while, but the, it means that their, their revenue is, is not exceeding, or, or 5% of their revenue is not exceeding $80,000 a year.
I don't know what that would mean, but, you know. They're not making a whole lot of money, is that what you're saying?
Oh, come on.
But, um, and, and I think that's, that's also a, a question of kind of active management of the shelters as well, and active relocation.
So we're not giving up a cash cow here. If we were to take it on ourselves, we wouldn't be making a whole lot of money.
It, I, I think that the, you know, there, there's a high degree of specialization involved in transit advertising, in particular, paper transit advertising in this era, that it, the, the other challenge is in, in many other cities that are collecting a, a large amount of revenue off of advertising shelters. Advertising shelters are the only approved form of outdoor advertising. There are no billboards in Washington, DC, and so the transit shelters in Washington, DC are the only place that one can out, advertise outdoors. In a slightly more saturated market, there's more kind of.
So we get a little bit of money, and we get them to maintain it. Seems like that's probably just as important. Do they do a good job maintaining them? Do, do we get any complaints on, do I hear about broken-down shelters?
Oh, yeah. But it wasn't this.
The, right, the, the prior contract, there, there have been concerns about maintenance in the past. Part of the challenges is a month-to-month agreement. There, there wasn't necessarily the structure in place to kind of align interests. A long, a longer-term agreement is an effort to make sure that we're kind of rowing together on that project.
Rush, what's your pleasure? I mean, Ms. Smith, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to hold for two weeks.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor, sent by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay.
Alex, thanks.
Thank you, members.
That brings us to the Land Use and Economic Development Committee. Ms. Gross is the chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 1083, Resolution Approving A Conditional Use Application Under The Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zone In Article Four, Chapter Nine, Ten, To Allow PMC 717 Liberty Associates The Transfer Of Development Rights From 908 Pen. the transfer of development rights from 908 Penn Avenue to 717 Liberty Avenue, Zone GTC Golden Triangle, Sub District C, Second Ward, Council District Six.
Motion, Ms. Gross.
Motion to approve.
Your second. Any conversation, those public hearing already held. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. That takes us to some more bills. I think all of them can read together, all of the rest of the bills.
Okay. Bill 1252, resolution amending resolution number 470, so as to transfer funds within City Council from Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery and transfer these funds to Sarah Heinz House. Bill number 1253, resolution amending resolution number 471, so as to transfer funds within City Council from Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery and transfer these funds to Sarah Heinz House. Bill number 1254, resolution amending resolution number 563, so as to reprogram funds within City Council, Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank, Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery, and transfer these funds to Allen Place Community Services and Sarah Heinz House. Bill number 1255, resolution amending resolution number 475, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank, Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic, and transfer these funds to Allen Place Community Services and Sarah Heinz House. Bill number 1256, resolution amending resolution number 673, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank, Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery, Northview Heights Tenant Council, Tribe Valley Athletic Association, and transfer these funds to Sarah Heinz House, Allen Place Community Services, and Rocks Performance Academy. Bill number 1257, resolution amending resolution number 564, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank, Preservation Pittsburgh Allegheny City Historic Gallery, Northview Heights Tenant Council, Tribe Valley Athletic Association, and transfer these funds to Sarah Heinz House, Allen Place Community Services Gallery, and Rocks Performance Academy. Bill number 1258, resolution amending resolution number 593, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Poise Foundation, Aquaphonics, Northview Heights, West Park Court, Northside Leadership Conference, Allegheny City Sanctuary, North Bureau, Seawickley, North Bureau, Seawickley, MOW, Brighton Heights, and transfer these funds to Sarah Heinz House and Allegheny City Society, Artist Image Resources, and Rocks Performance Academy. Bill number 1259, resolution amending resolution number 594, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from North Bureau, Seawickley, Mills on Wheels, Brighton Heights Mills on Wheels, North Bureau, Seawickley, Mills on Wheels, Tribe Valley, Northside Leadership Conference, Allegheny City Sanctuary Fair, Poise Foundation, Aquaphonics, Northview Heights, West Park Court, and transfer these funds to Allegheny City Society, Artist Image Resources, Rocks Performance Academy, and Sarah Heinz House. Bill number 1260, resolution amending resolution number 764, so as to reprogram funds within the City Council Office from North Bureau, Seawickley, MOW Brighton Heights, North Bureau, Seawickley, MOW Tribe Valley, and transfer these funds to Bridge Committee. Bill number 1261, resolution amending resolution number 598, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from North Seawickley, MOW Brighton Heights, North Bureau, Seawickley, MOW Tribe Valley, and transfer these funds to Bridge Committee. Bill number 1262, resolution amending resolution number 742, so as to reprogram funds from the City Council Budget, Northside Senior Center and Northside Senior Programming, to transfer funds to Allegheny Mountain USA Boxing. Bill number 1263, resolution amending resolution number 746, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Northside Senior Center and Northside Senior Programming, to transfer funds to Allegheny Mountain USA Boxing.
Thank you very much. I need a motion, Ms. Gross.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second discussion.
Discussion, Ms. Harris.
Okay. Yeah, these are all old monies of mine, which we have attempted to ask them to utilize the money. So what we're doing is putting it somewhere else, hopefully they will put it to use right away. And any of these other ones, if they want the money, I'll gladly give them money, but they got to use it. You just can't sit on it for years at a time. So that's basically what's happening here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harris, Ms. Smith.
You get us confused. Anyway, I just want to say, I think that there's been a lot of concerns with city planning in terms of the funding, the CDBG funding, and how we're, I mean, we've had a lot of people, some were getting the mail sent to wrong addresses, and that's why they weren't collecting. I just found out after two years, that's what was going on. Some weren't aware that they were even eligible for the funding, or the criteria that they're saying now is a little bit more stringent. So I really think that we need to have some meetings and talk to city planning a little bit. I know there's new people there. I knew some people had retired and left. I think there's one person there that was there for a long time. So I just think that this conversation we have to have, because it seems like there's been a lot of confusion over the year, past year or two especially.
And I agree with you 100% in maybe we need to talk to these people, because, for example, right now, I have St. Michael's, and they're putting air in there, so I gave them the money, because they have all the neighborhood organizations in there, NA, Alcoholics Anonymous, I mean, all kind of groups from the community, and that's basically what they use their hall for, is, is community service.
I also think that HUD does a lot with, you know, they set up new criteria, and you have to have, you know, years ago, and, you know, to get the money to the communities and neighborhoods and the people, it's really intended to benefit, but actually, I think it's actually prevented that, because a lot of times you have to have a five, all cases you have to have a 501(c)(3).
Right.
Most groups that really need the money don't have a 501(c)(3), can't afford to pay for a 501(c)(3), and they don't meet the criteria for some of the things. Sometimes they just need help with refreshments or transportation to and from a place, and different things that aren't always necessarily covered, entertainment or something like that, that may not be covered. And I just, I just think we've had this, I've had the conversation with HUD directly, that the money is really not always reaching the people it should be reached, and a lot of it is their stipulations. So I just think that that's a larger conversation. I'll shut up now.
Well, 501(c)(3) if they go under another community...
Right, use it as a conduit.
And air support.
But it's the reimbursement, and a lot of people don't have that money to put up front.
Exactly.
And then to wait to be reimbursed, and they certainly can't wait on our process, because it certainly does take a long time.
Well, it's taken longer now than it has ever taken.
Yeah. So I just think overall, not just our city plan, but HUD in general, just, you know...
The what?
Permit, that takes another month.
Oh, that takes another, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We have a variety of motions to approve on the table. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. That exhausts the meeting, I believe. Is there any motions or resolutions to come before council at this moment? Seeing none, I will entertain a, Ms. Harris.
Yes, I talked to Cory about having a post-agenda on the gun issue. What I'm going to attempt to do is try to get people that are not on either side to come in and talk to us on that subject matter.
On both sides, on all sides?
On either side?
No, no. I would, I, what I'm going to attempt...
Either side, what do you mean by either side?
No. I'm going to attempt to try to get neutral people.
Neutral people, you mean neutral.
You want to get facts.
And get facts from people that could be neutral. We cannot have our law department come up and speak to us on this. So I'm going to motion, yes.
Second.
So a motion for a cable cast post-agenda on guns.
On the gun bills.
Yeah, but just a brief discussion.
On the gun bills or on...
The three gun bills.
Okay. Have you talked to Mr. Connor and Ms. Strasburger, who are the authors of those bills? I hope that you will work with them.
Oh, I will, definitely.
In terms of entertaining the post-agenda.
So I, just a very brief comment. I don't understand how we would be educated if people came that did not have an opinion either way. What would be the purpose of having them come to inform the council?
So I'd like to hear a little bit more, because I want to be honest with you.
But I have the floor, if I may.
Okay, I'm going to talk when you're done.
Yeah, but, I mean, clearly, people are going to have opinions on both sides. So let's just say, people are going to have opinions on both sides. We're not going to have people that are going to come here without an opinion, because then what would be the purpose of the post-agenda? People are going to come with very strong opinions on both sides, so let's just be honest about it.
Well, they would be neutral, and I think from the state.
So we will allow, I think, allow, I think we will trust the author and the most of the post-agenda to create, to pick the speakers and to create the atmosphere in which all of us will participate and support. So there's a motion for televised post-agenda and a second. Ms. Smith?
I just want to say, I hope that you also include someone from the FBI, because we have, I have been given a lot of comments and concerns that a lot of these laws in other cities disproportionately affect African-American, the African-American community and the immigrant community, because that's where they're mostly enforced in those neighborhoods. So I want to make sure that we have actual numbers, and we know what we're actually voting on, and how it's going to actually impact everyday Pittsburghers, and whether or not we, you know, we need to make some amendments or tweak things, because I want to make...
Absolutely, and I'll take input from anyone, I just don't want radical...
I want information, I want facts.
So we have a motion, we have a motion for cable cast post-agenda on the three gun bills, in addition to the public hearings that were already scheduled. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Now I will entertain a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
Aye.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. We are adjourned.